Steve, unusual picture because this would be a little different than maybe what you'd expect. But I saw the Father wrapping you in His arms. And He said, "Some people grow up and it's almost as if they mature, they lose the awe and the wonder of it all." But this is going to be a season of even greater maturity for you in the sense of even as a fully mature apostolic pastoral leader, phenomenal teacher. I'm causing childlike wonder to come upon you like never before. And you're about to see Jesus through the eyes of your grandchildren. You're about to see the fruit of your labors, every seed that you sown and every frustration you fought through. What I'm about to do in the next three and five and 10 years is going to exceed your expectations. But this is what the Lord would say to you tonight. "You have exceeded my expectations." The Lord says that you will build all that is in His heart for you to build. There's ebbs and flows and times and seasons in looking for the next. There is great transition. But through the transition, I'm bringing transformation after transformation after transformation. And I saw the Father just coming in and embracing you. You're one of the most manly men that I know. But I felt like just you're going to know the affections of God. You're going to get caught up in the affections of God. And Lord, I just thank you right now for refreshing and renewal. I saw the Lord like reading the manuscripts of messages you preached 20 years ago and 30 years ago. I saw you revisiting things and going, "Wow, that was out there." I don't even know if I still believe that. But you're going to watch this progression of things. It's not just history, it's destiny. It's not just memories, it's miracles. You've seen miracles. But the greatest miracles in the making are right in front of you. Lord, right now, let that word of increase come upon Him. It's going to be days where you're just in His presence. Your number one assignment in this season is His presence. Your number one assignment in this season is His presence. Because if you have that, the church will grow, the church will be built, miracles will happen. Lord, I thank you right now. Lord, I pray that you would overwhelm my friend with your presence. I want to say it to you and I want to say it to every person in this room. Thank you. Steve, thank you for not quitting. When all hell broke loose, thank you for not quitting. When people left and betrayed, thank you for not quitting. When people tried to run you out of town, thank you. It's going to be one of the greatest seasons of fruitfulness, but also one of the greatest seasons of testimony. But I thank you for the people that are going to come back and say thank you. Remember when Jesus did all those healings and only one came back? I feel like so many people are going to come back and say thank you. Lord, I thank you for Trish. Lord, I thank you for the anointing, the grace upon her life. I just saw this huge smile in the heart of God. Because you make Him happy. You're a daughter who makes His heart happy. And I heard the sound of a revving engine and I asked the Lord what it's about. And the Lord said, "Revelation married to intercession." And I feel like there's a new prophetic flow that's about to flow out of your prayer life and your intercession. This is a season. I just saw all of this like R&amp;R like. You come out of battles and then there's rest and refreshing. But your intercession is about to break forth in restoration. The miracles of restoration are about to flow from you. But I also saw this new grace to watch people get baptized in the Holy Spirit. I saw people that lost their Pentecostal fire, have lost their charisma, have lost their pursuit of spiritual things, getting refilled. So Lord, thanks for Trish. Lord, I thank you for the amazing boy in our arms tonight. Lord, I thank you for the anointing of the pastor that's upon him. I saw his hands just always being wet and I asked the Lord what it's about. Lord, said he's going to know how to wipe tears from people's eyes. He's going to bring peace and joy. But he's also got the gift of a peacemaker upon his life that goes into tumultuous, difficult seasons and brings people to the table to bring them together. Lord, I thank you for the Isaac anointing. That Lord, he's a son of joy, he's a son of laughter, a son of promise. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. At least the Lord's working out every little detail. And Lord says, "The things that you've worried about, just worship through them." It's not a season to make everybody else happy. It's a season for you to step into the miracle that God's creating for you. Everything that you've walked through is about to be sorted out. Everything... You're going to find the purpose of it all in the season that's in front of you. And I just felt like the Lord was like putting His perfect peace in your gut. Places of confusion, places of just trying to figure it out. I saw just this peace coming over you. I heard the Lord say to tell you that He's big enough. He's big enough to take care of them and He's big enough to take care of all that. It's parts of you that always wanted to be the mom or felt like you had to be the mom to sisters and the mom to friends and be the voice of truth and reason and the protector and all of those things. And I heard the Lord said, "I appreciate the help, but that's my job." It's not corrective, it's simply saying, "I'm lifting things off your shoulders." I saw the Lord tapping His foot and dancing. And there's a secular song that I heard Him singing over you and it's, "I've had the time of my life." When you step into that worship space, it's like the Lord is saying, "I'm having the time of my life." I feel like it's a season where you and the Lord are going to sit down by the keys. There's new melodies, new rhythms, new lyrics, new choruses, new bridges that the Lord's about to bring forth. Lord, I thank you right now that peace is about to mark these next few months. Just the peace of God. You're going to know like this statement. "It is well with my soul, with my heart, with my will, with my emotions. It is so well." Lord, I just thank you right now. I feel like your dream life is about to change. I feel like just heaven is about to engage every area of your life. So Lord, we just pour that out in Jesus' name. Pastor Dave, the... I got in the car today after being with you for a bit and I thought this. He's the kindest person I ever met. Other than Jesus, you're like, you're the kindest person I ever met. And I saw that last part of 1 Corinthians 13 that talks about these three things that remain: faith, hope, and love. I feel like throw kindness in the mix of those and those four words define exactly who you are. A man of faith, a man of hope, a man of love, and a man of genuine kindness. Just the love of God just oozes out of you. Lord, I thank you for heart-to-heart communion with you in this season. It's this tremendous place of heart-to-heart communion. I feel like the Lord's inviting you to take communion with Him on a daily basis for a season. It's not about the juice and the bread, but I feel like something is coming alive on the inside of you. There's this timelessness about you. Like it's this ability that just very aware and living in the present, but there's this timeless grace on your life. It's being present in the moment while living towards eternity. And Lord, I just thank you for all of the trophies that Dave didn't keep for himself. Heaven knows, Dave. The seed you sown, the people you've led to the Lord. Lord, I thank you right now for a faithful man. But I thank you for just his genuine heart or the kindness that he carries that brings people to repentance so that they turn and see your face. Steph, I saw oil and honey and musical notes flowing out of the heart of God like His heart was singing over you. Like the heart of the Lord was full for you. And I heard the word fulfillment, but I also heard the word fullness. It's a season of fullness of time and fullness of joy and fullness of spirit. But also fulfillment of every promise. And I saw like this river of God just flowing over you and it was exciting and exhilarating. And then it was like I saw you getting caught up in this river. It's kind of like a water park, lazy river thing where you just kind of chill out and you just flow wherever the water takes you. You can even take a nap because it just moves at a certain pace. And I felt like the Lord said, "You've been wondering if you're behind or ahead or..." And I felt like the Lord said that this is the season that He knows what time it is and you're stepping into perfect timing. Your chronos, your normal, your natural moment is about to step in, connect to those kairos, those now moments in God. You have one assignment in this season and that's to enjoy Him. You're going to enjoy the Lord more than you've ever enjoyed Him and He's going to enjoy you more than He's ever enjoyed you. The Lord put this mark on you from before you were born, wholly to the Lord. Like the Lord set you apart for Himself. And I felt like the Lord said, "As you've done that and will continue to do that, He's preparing your heart's desire because you've been faithful to it." It's going to be one of your greatest seasons of adventure, but also one of your greatest seasons of security. Like, "I know that I know that I know and at the same time I'll free as a bird." There's an assignment on your life to set the songbirds free. Those that have been confined, those that have been contained, I saw you opening up the doors. It's interesting that you're on the base tonight because I heard these words very clearly. There's a new rhythm over life. There's a new pace, a new flow. It's going to be fun and not wearisome. Two very simple things, but I feel like you need to hear them tonight. "I've got you and I've got this." "I've got you and I've got this." My daughter's 24 and she'd really like to be married and I've run some guys off on her. And I don't regret that. She might, but I don't regret it. And we were talking one day and she's like, "I just want this, I just want this." And I just said these words to her and I feel like it's a word from the Lord for you. I just said, "Honey, you've waited too long not to wait." She didn't like it because she felt like she has to wait a whole lot longer, but that's not the case. It was like the Lord was actually commending her for not settling for counterfeits. And I just felt like the Lord said, "I protected you from the counterfeits." You were ready, they weren't. But there's about to be a collision of the desire of your heart and the perfect timing of the Lord that's going to be so beautifully amazing. I'm going to say something that I can't say to very many people, but I just know it's true, what the Lord just spoke to my heart. He said, "Tell her, 'I have her right where I want her and she's in my perfect will.'" "I have her right where I want her and she's in my perfect will." Which means you don't have to make anything happen. And I'm not a Hebrew scholar, but I saw Shalom coming over you. This perfect peace, nothing missing, nothing broken. Just the Shalom of the Lord coming over you. In Jesus' name. Honey, you've got a gift, just what I just watched you do with Steph and you put your arm around her. You've got a gift to bring people in. And just when you came in, we talked for a few seconds there. I felt like I've never felt so welcomed anywhere. Because there was this authentic, great, happy-to-see-you thing that you expressed. But it wasn't like fanfare and niceties. It was actually this thing that was real and true. I saw two words marking you. Kingdom reality. Because kingdom is your reality and your reality is the kingdom. And I kept hearing the Lord say to tell you, "Merry Christmas," and I'm thinking it's only July 16th. But I saw you unwrapping presents. It's the season of unwrapping presents. Of the presence of the Lord. Lord, I bless her in that. Lord, I thank you for the gift of your gifts. I just saw you unwrapping the gifts. Prophecy, healing. It's a real season where the Lord's inviting you in to dream with God. Lord, thank you for that. Lord, thanks for your sweetheart bicycle rider. Honey, the beauty of the Lord, like the beauty, the picture of what Jesus looks like is in your eyes and on your smile. And I just, I just saw the Lord just anointing every part of you for healing. This one's marked with worship and with healing. And as she sings and plays, people are just going to, they're just going to get caught up in the healing presence of the Lord. Lord, I thank you for the gift of abiding in your heart. Lord, I thank you. I just heard the word, honey. It's a big word for a young lady, but it's abiding presence. But I thank you for the abiding presence over her life. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. I saw the Lord with tears of joy streaming down His face, honey. And I asked the Lord what it was about and the Lord said, "He moves me. She moves me." She moves my heart, she moves my emotions. And Lord said, "He's going to show you the power of your yes." That the things you said yes to, that other people said no to have opened up something supernatural over your life. And you said no to some things for the sake of that yes. But I felt like the Lord said, "He's coming upon you with appreciation and permission." And I just felt like the Lord said that He's about to put things in your hands. He's about to anoint you with unexplainable favor that is unearned. It's like you don't have to earn it, it's just upon your life. I don't know where you're believing to go or what you're believing to do. But I heard the Lord say to tell you that it's going to be fully funded. I saw like scholarships with your name on it. I saw an endowment just for trips that you would take and things you'd be a part of. I felt Jesus the lavisher just lavishing His love, lavishing His favor upon you. Lord, I thank you for that which will be fully funded. Lord, I thank you or for your tremendous heart for her. I feel like you're on a journey of seeking, asking, and knocking. And I felt like the Lord said to tell you that He loves your questions. Because your questions aren't based in doubt or unbelief, they're actually based in the fact of, "Lord, I want to know." The Lord's given you a gift to inquire of the Lord. Scripture I quoted earlier tonight from Psalm 27. "To dwell in your house and inquire of the Lord." I think sometimes prophetic people miss things because they don't know how to stand in the counsel of the Lord. I'm not calling you a prophet, but I believe the gift of prophecy and prophetic anointing is going to grow in your life. You're going to be one who knows how to inquire of the Lord, but also one who stands in the counsel of the Lord. So Lord, I just thank you for that. I thank you for the counsel of the Lord. You're so wise. Sometimes people think you're too smart, but you're wise. I thank you for the wisdom of the Lord. It's going to be a seasonal great clarity for you. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. I saw you just throwing your hands up in the air. And it was like this place of like, sometimes my kids will do it, I'm too afraid to do it, but on a roller coaster where I'll hold on for dear life and my kids are throwing their hands up in the air. Because it's, it's a rush, it's a wild ride, it's... And I feel like the Lord was inviting you in to explore not only what's possible in your lifetime, but you're about to explore what's on the other side of your obedience like I talked about. And I just felt like tonight, especially in that first song we were singing, I just saw the breath of God just flowing out of you. And I feel like it's a summer where you're going to know the wind of God in your sails. But I think that, Lord, you're about to bring her out to the depths, you're about to take her out into the deep. Sometimes people want to go higher, but the secret is the way higher is deeper. And I just felt like you're just exploring the depths of the love of God. I love the scripture in Romans that what can separate us from the love of God and how deep, how wide. And I feel like you're going to begin to ponder those things. But I saw you like deep diving, just swimming into the depths of His love. And this is an interesting or peculiar word because I don't know the full meaning of it, but I want to. He said, "He's inviting you to search the unsearchable riches of God." Lord, I thank you for that season of searching the unsearchable riches. In Jesus' name. Buddy, when we met, talked out in the foyer just for a moment earlier tonight and I shook your hand, I felt like heat in your hand go through my hand. To me, that often signifies healing, which I think is present on your life. But I felt like warmth. I felt like the fire of God go from you into me. And I felt like the Lord said that He's marked you with His fire, that He's put a gift of mercy and fire on your life, that you're going to have this mercy heart that wants to show mercy to the lost and the broken and the hurting. And that'll come out in evangelism and kind of pastoral stuff. But I also saw the fire of God, which to me marks somebody with holiness and the fear of the Lord. It's not being afraid of God, it's actually carrying His presence well. And I feel like the Lord's made you super smart. Like this ability to just figure people, figure things out and to study things out. But at the same time, I saw the Lord giving you this heart that wants to see what hasn't been seen. This may sound kind of simple or funny, but I saw the Lord giving you a tiptoe anointing, like standing on your tippy toes to see what's on the other side of the fence, to get a different perspective. When I was describing that, the Lord said, "He's going to be known all of His life as one who goes out of the way, one who goes above and beyond." But I think He's going to live a life of beyond His wildest dreams. Because, Lord, you've called him to be a young man who goes above and beyond. Or He doesn't just going to do things out of duty, He's going to do things out of worship. And I thank you for that. I thank you for that. In Jesus' name. Brother, I was praying for him and I started hearing the words of a song probably from the sixties and the words are up on the roof. And like, you know, when this whole world starts getting me down, I go up to where the air is fresh and sweet up on the roof. And I felt like the Lord said, the interpretation of that is this is that he's anointed you for high places. He's anointed you as one who's willing to go the extra mile. I saw you like being one of the disciples that was willing to take the paralytic man up onto the roof and cut a hole in the roof and drop him to put him in front of Jesus. But I also saw the grace on your life to shout it from the rooftops. Not just with your voice, but with your life. As we were just chatting and hanging out in the foyer there. I kept hearing this phrase that really moved my heart about you. Lord said, I didn't just give him integrity of action. I gave him integrity of heart. And I saw just the gift, the grace of integrity of heart upon your life. And I, I saw, you know, being a tremendous dad to your own kids, but I, I feel like your legacy is gonna be beyond that. Like many people are gonna look at you and say, that's my spiritual dad. Those that didn't know what a father looked like in the natural are gonna see what it looks like in the spirit because you're one who models it well. Sometimes in order for people to believe the miracle, they need to see the miracle modeled. And I felt like the Lord's gonna use you to be one who models the miracle. So Lord, I thank you for that. But I thank you for your amazing daughter. There was one moment tonight, I, I just looked around the room and had your hands out in worship. And it was like, I saw the Lord just like laser beam focused on you. And he said, she has my full attention and she has my full affection. And I, I feel like the Lord for you is gonna be closer than your next breath. Like I feel like one of you, you're, you're gonna carry one of the greatest testimonies the earth has ever seen or heard. Which is, I've known the Lord my whole life. One of my favorite scriptures is from Jesus in the Sermon on the Mount, Matthew. He's talking about the Beatitudes. He said, blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God. You're gonna see what a lot of people can't see because the heart's pure. The Lord's been speaking to me a lot over the last two years about what he's about to do in this generation. And I said, I'm gonna restore innocence to a generation that had stolen from them. And I, I feel like you're carrying that innocence and you're gonna be a healer of that innocence. But I felt like the purity of your heart is just a magnet for God. This is a real cool thing to hear, honey. I, I heard the Lord say, tell her she encourages me. Now, the Lord's all sufficient in himself. But the Lord specifically said to tell you that you encourage him. Lord, I thank you for the gift of encouragement that she encourages your heart. She encourages who you are, Lord. What a gift, what a calling. Or thanks for that. In Jesus' name. I heard in a really loud voice, like angels calling people to attention. Angels calling themselves to attention. It was like, attention, there's an officer on deck. And I, I saw like, like this whole battalion, this whole army of angels assigned to you. And your prayers were sending them out to carry out the word of the Lord. I saw some of the angels assigned to you and they looked ornery, like they were angels with attitudes. I said, Lord, why that? And the Lord said, cause she's a fighter. What I felt was this, is that you've been one who has ward over every word. Not just in the administration of the church, but you've ward over every word as an intercession, as an intercessor and a commander and a general who's, who's taken that word. And I know we're stewards of everything the Lord gives us and not owners, but I, I felt like the Lord used it in the best sense of the word is that you've taken ownership of the promises. And Lord, I just thank you right now for just the anointing of healing that's gonna flow. Lord, it's flown to her, but Lord, it's about to flow through her in new and unusual ways. I feel like that you've taken things on physically because you were fighting spiritually. And I felt like the Lord was like redeeming the time and redeeming things. The Lord said, I healed you of the, the big thing, but now I'm gonna begin to remove the symptoms. It's not just free of the thing, but free of the symptoms that remain from the thing. The Lord says you're gonna live among the greats and the greats. But I thank you for the things she's about to see in her own family with her own kids and grandkids and great grandkids and I felt just the explosion of the power of God. Pastor Steve was up and exhorting us before the transition about, but I thank you for the gifts of power. I thank you for the gifts of power. Like I saw those words like just like missiles coming over you. There's a fresh endowment of, of fresh and doing a fresh anointing of Dunamis power. You know, one of the brands of shoes or sporting, sport clothing today is called Under Armour. The whole theme of Under Armour is protect this house. And Lord said, that's been one of your personal assignments is to protect this house. Or thanks for a general in the kingdom. Your reputation precedes you like it goes before you. I'm telling you, there's multitudes of the hosts of heaven, angels that are armed and ready to go, that are responding to your word. It's an interesting word. I don't know. I can't recall ever giving anybody anything similar, but the Lord said, your prayer language is about to change. And it's grown over the years, but I feel like there's almost, it's almost gonna be, you're gonna find yourself praying in different languages. From your home and in your that, that appointed place of prayer. It's gonna begin to affect and release countless people into the kingdom. And I thank you for a sharpening of every good and perfect gift on the inside in Jesus' name. Tonight, as we were opening up, I looked at you and I heard this one word really strong, honor. I feel like your whole life, you're gonna be known as a man of honor. Who honors people. I have friends that teach it like this, that honor is a currency of heaven. I've learned from guys who've gone before me that what you honor, you become. So you don't have to work your way into something. You just fully receive from those that have gone on before. And I, I heard this, even as you're one who's honored, one who honors the Lord and honors family and honors his presence. The Lord also just showed me like this trail, this road was on fire and you were running in front of the fire. And I heard the word just may sound unusual or simple, but I heard the word say that he's anointed you as a trailblazer. One who pioneers things, starts things from scratch. Then you won't just start it, but you'll actually see it through. So I just release blessing over him. Lord, I thank you for the anointing of the prophetic, of the anointing of the seer. The Lord's coming upon this son. Lord, I, I thank you for dreams and visions. But, but I thank you for not only vision, but the proper perspective of heaven. I saw one of those puzzles, which was like connect the dots and I, I saw you connecting dots. It was like explaining things in a whole picture. Most of us, even what I'm doing tonight is just seeing through a glass dimly. I, I get a piece and a part. But I feel like you're gonna be one who helps people unpack things in process to bring out the whole picture of what the Lord said. But I thank you for the freedom and ease of this season. Like some people get caught up in all the things we have to do and we try and we try. But there's just this trust with you and the Lord. That's really gonna be life-giving. And I saw some things coming full circle, like even some things where you would have gone, what I would have liked to gone to this, I would have liked to finish this or see this. I saw the Lord bringing things back around full circle. And so it may not have been like in consecutive years or in consecutive things, but the Lord's gonna begin to open up doors. And you're gonna be like, ah, I got the best of both worlds. So I had this and I had this and now I'm stepping into the greater. Lord, I thank you for that. But I thank you that Lord, he's not just gonna have clear eyes, but Lord, I, I thank you for the heart from which he sees. There's a song back from maybe 99 or 2000. Occasionally people still sing it, but the words are, open the eyes of my heart, Lord. And so Lord, I thank you for the anointing to see through the heart, to hear you through the heart. But I appreciate that. Thank you for that for him in Jesus' name. Brother, I saw a tender heart. But at the same time, I saw this grace on your life that can carry huge amounts of weight on your shoulders. And I, it was kind of a funny picture. I, I saw you having the enemy in a headlock and then like in a figure four leg lock and it was like, I saw you wrestling. Often when we talk about wrestling in the spirit, we think of Jacob who wrestled with God and I, I don't feel like any of you wrestles with the Lord. But it's almost like the, that the Lord has anointed you to, to just wrestle the snot, to beat the snot out of the enemy. And, 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 and some of that's the, you know, a warrior in you, which I think is great. But it was almost like, I, I, you know, Jesus, the, the scripture says that we're seated in him in heavenly places. So not just seated with him, but seated in him. And I'm going off memory, so it's either right before that or right after that. It talks about how Jesus spoiled powers and principalities. He disarmed them. And I just feel like that you're gonna disarm the enemy, but here's another great thing that you're being called to do, to disarm arguments. I feel like that you're gonna erase the argument of the atheist and the agnostic and the skeptic and the cynical, because they won't be able to argue with your experience with God. Like nobody can tell you that God's not good because you've known the goodness of God. Nobody can ever tell you that God doesn't do miracles because you've seen a miracle. As soon as I said, you've seen a miracle, the Lord said to tell you and then reemphasize this to you, that you are a miracle. And I feel like your life at the very root, the very core of who you are, the very makeup of your DNA is miraculous. I think that's pretty cool. But I thank you for the son of the miracle. One who's gonna know and walk in miracles all of his days in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. It's gonna sound funny as I start, so I'm prefacing, prefacing the word with it. It's gonna sound a little bit funny and then I'll get to the point. I saw everybody else like in perfect rhythm and I saw you being offbeat. Like everybody else was going one way and you were going a little bit of a different direction. And it wasn't because you didn't have rhythm and it wasn't because you were off base and it wasn't, it was just that you were one that God created to color outside the lines. To actually, you, you marched to the beat of a different drum. Cause when most people are doing what everybody else is doing, you're finding the heart of God and saying just a little bit slower, or it's just a little bit faster, or it's just a little bit bigger. And I, I just felt like the Lord said that he's anointed you to cause people to have their faith stretched. Like I, I saw the Lord giving you faith to believe, like the gift of faith, one of those power gifts. Is the gifts of healing, the working of miracles. And the third one in that grouping is the gift of faith. Which makes all the other things possible. It's not just the measure of faith that we get at salvation, but it is, it is the, it is the faith, not just faith in the Son of God, but the faith of the Son of God that rises up on the inside. And I saw that gift of faith flowing through your life. I saw the Lord cheering you on as you go different directions. I feel like a part of that is that some people do one thing really well. But I saw you being able to multitask really well. And I, I feel like there's gonna be things that you're, you're doing, but you're already into the next thing. And some people aren't gonna be able to figure it out. And here's why, not everybody's a genius. I'm gonna say a word. I don't want it to go to your head. I want it to pierce your heart. The Lord says you're a genius. And sometimes you struggle with how smart you are. I, I just saw you being above your pay grade, above your school grade, above those things. And it's not anything that you've had to achieve. It's, I have a friend, when you're older, maybe you should get the book. I haven't fully read it or heard the whole message, but the, I think that the title is gonna mark you tonight. Spiritual intelligence. It, it's the gift of spiritual intelligence. Not just head smarts and book smarts, but it's, it's the intellect of God. Jesus is the smartest person I've ever met. And you're gonna know him like that. Doesn't take away from the heart part at all. It's connecting the head of God and the heart of God to everyday life. And that's gonna be a tremendous gift and grace on you. I'm coming behind you, brother, because this is what I saw the Lord doing. The same way that you're watching words come over sins. And you're celebrating words and maybe words that you've known, but not been able to express, or words that you've been praying over them their whole life. The Lord's watching over those words, but I'm coming behind you on purpose instead of standing in front of you. Cause I saw the Lord watching over every word. And I feel like he's putting his hands on your back because the wind of God is coming to your back in this season. It's gonna be a season, a season of tailwinds. But I also just felt like the Lord was saying, I'm watching over the words that were prayed over you, spoken over you. And I just felt just the, the blessing, generational blessings of heaven, the generational blessings of the Father coming over you. And I saw like, almost like people almost getting fire under, under their feet, beginning to move their feet. That's what he said, there's some that you feel like you left behind because you went on a different path or journey, but they're about to catch up. Cause like the word that came over your, the young man up there about the trailblazer, you've been blazing the trail. But you've been doing it quietly. But you've been doing it quietly. Sometimes pioneers make a lot of noise saying, this is what I'm doing and this is where we're going and all kinds of fan fear. But you've just been doing the work. You've been letting the light and the life of, you've been letting the life that you live and the light of your life speak for you. It's not by accident you were singing the faithfulness song tonight. That's who the Lord is to you, but it's also who you are to the Lord. Lord always knows where to find you because he's found you faithful. The Lord's always known where to find you because he's found you faithful. Or thanks for that. In Jesus' name. Lord, thanks for the life of every party. Lord, I thank you that you put inside of him Lord, the anointing of grace. But also you've anointed him to push the envelope. But I, don't take this the wrong way, but I saw you pushing people's buttons, which is a a term like, if anybody can kinda get me on the edge, it's, and it's, it's not anything bad. It's that you provoke people to good works in God, be one of the marks of your life. And Lord says, no matter the road you take to get there. He wants you to know that because of the prophetic calling on your life, times people won't be able to figure you out, but he understands you. And I saw this tremendous gift and grace spiritually. I saw like almost an equal gift of the evangelist and the prophet. I feel like you're gonna have this tremendous word of knowledge and maybe this word's not gonna make a whole lot of sense here tonight, but by the time you're fifteen, sixteen, it's gonna be an operation in your life. But I, I felt like the Lord said, you're never gonna have the absence of friendships. Because you're gonna always have deep friendships. You'll know how to work a room, meaning be the life of the party. But you're also gonna be known for your covenant heart. But I, I thank you that he's gonna know the power of covenant and commitment. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Amen. My brother, all night tonight, I kept looking your direction. And I saw these huge teardrops of the Lord just coming over you. And like, they were, the best way I could describe them is the overflow of God's heart and his pride over you. And Lord said you don't, he's not just proud of you, but he's pleased with you. And I saw the gift of, of pondering upon your life. It's really easy. Sometimes even the longer we know the Lord, where we just kind of breeze through and we go through our Bible reading plan and just read through the Bible in a year. But I saw you pausing to let the word reach you. I saw you pausing to ponder even the things that you've heard or listened to or written down or studied out in the past. I saw the gift to ponder. More spiritual word maybe, I saw you meditating on the word day and night. I saw you at times hitting the pause button because it wasn't about getting through. It was actually about waiting on the Lord. It was actually about the revelation that was flowing. One of my favorite statements about, from the Lord about this season is that revelation sets you free from information. In a world that's so filled with information, just nonstop information, normally bad information or bad news. I saw the Lord filling you with good news. Brother, I don't believe in giving people titles or telling them what their function is. But I do believe words describe and define. And the best sense of this word, a word we don't use very much anymore, I saw the gift of the deacon in you. I love Philip the deacon who gets picked up and put in front of a Ethiopian eunuch because he was available. I look at the Andrews and the, they're apostolic, but they, they were, they were servant leaders. And I feel like there's this gift that's been this constant, consistent servant leader upon your life, but I also felt like the Lord was activating, stirring up a gift that really, you may have lived it without fully having it acknowledged in your life. It's, but I saw the gift of Jesus, the teacher on the inside of you. Sometimes it's teaching through the things that you break down, but sometimes just teaching people from the stories of your life. Lord, I just thank you. I saw this book and it was like the, the Lord said, this is his life. It's, it was the history of your life. The history of your walk with God, your, the history of your everyday encountering the Lord. But I just thank you right now for this season of just encountering you, encountering heaven like never before. In Jesus' name. Honey, I just saw the Lord like leaping for joy, jumping for joy over you. And, and I felt like this, this, almost like this waterfall, this cascading sensation or presence of the Lord coming over you. And it was just, it was, it was not just refreshing, but it was exhilarating and I, I, I felt like the Lord just showed me places of his heart that were being moved because of your prayers moved, because of your heart moved, because of your compassion. I, I saw the gift of compassion on the inside of you and I love that word compassion, especially when compassion is moved with action or combined with action. Because whenever the scripture says that Jesus was moved with great compassion, all got healed and all got set free. And I just kept hearing the sound of like shackles and handcuffs, things like that, just fall, chains falling to the ground. Because I feel like it's gonna be a real season of deliverance, but I'm not talking about the screaming out demon thing. I'm talking about watching people get delivered and awakened to who they really are, delivered from their past. Awakened to who they really are. Awakened to their identity in Christ. And I just feel like one of the greatest gifts, like I saw the Lord giving you a magnifying glass. And I saw you magnifying people's identity, saying, this is who you are and helping them discover it. My pastor always taught it like this, that God determines our destiny, but we have to discover it. And I, I feel like that, one of the greatest things about, you're gonna be like a Sherlock Holmes in the spirit. Discover, helping people to discover the clues that lead them to destiny. And so, Lord, I thank you for that. Lord, I thank you for the gifts of compassion. And there's great faith in you, but also the Lord loves just the practical side of you. The way that you practically live out the gospel, that you practically live out the kingdom. And Lord, I pray that you give her so much love that she just, that Lord, she just oozes it, that, that Lord, that which she pours out. Lord on others, that Lord, it would just be multiplied to her. I, I just saw just the, the, the love of God. Really overwhelms me just standing by you, just the overwhelming love of God. The love that he has for you, but you're the love that you have for him. And I saw the scripture. Trying to fully remember where it is, but I think it's Paul speaking. He said, the, the love of God compels us to shed this good news abroad. And I just feel like that this is gonna be a season of just, you're gonna compel people to the love of God, compel people to step into their calling and destiny. So Lord, thanks for that. Thanks for this amazing man of God. And brother, I saw like the Lord giving you a megaphone. And I feel like the Lord is about to amplify your voice. There's about to be almost like a, I guess the best way to say it is an amplification of, of the voice of God. It has nothing to do with volume, but has everything to do with the weight of what you speak. And I feel like the, the Lord was saying that your word has weights, your, your word has weight, like there's the weight of the word upon you. And I, I've been asking the Lord for that. I've been pondering that, thinking about that myself, like, but I don't just want a word to be spoken and then fall off or just be like, oh, that was okay. But it's, it's the weight of the word. And I just feel like the things that you speak with the place through the word of wisdom and and that which you speak, it's gonna, people are gonna feel the weight, like long after the, the encounter's over, the meeting's over, the lunch is over, the coffee's over, the boardroom's over. It's, it's like they remembered, they felt the weight of what you said. Best way to define it is I feel like there's an increase of authority in your life. Which comes from a place of trust that's built with the Lord over time. So Lord, I just thank you for that increase of authority. Lord, I thank you for the authority of the believer, but it's different. But I believe there's a new authority that comes with with greater responsibility and leadership and I don't know fully what that looks like, but I thank you for the weight of his words, the authority that's coming on him. I thank you for this princess in his lap. Lord, I thank you. That Lord, she is gonna carry the gifts of God's love. She's gonna carry the gifts that make people walk away and go, God loves me. And that, Lord, I thank you for the motivation of mercy on her life. But Lord, that gift of mercy on her life won't give people a free pass and actually loves the people so much that it allows them to stay the same. And I, I saw her just, her ability to love people to their destiny, to love people and to, I love you too much to let you do that. And she's gonna, she's gonna be a leader of leaders. She's gonna shift atmospheres wherever she goes. And so, Lord, I thank you for that. And I thank you for the, the baby that was in the carrier. So when you came in and she was a little bit asleep, I saw the Lord just resting over this one that was in the carrier and I, I I just really felt like the Lord said, she's carrying a sound for her generation. And I feel like that even her cry, even just her, so we're talking from her earliest days, it is like more like a song. There's a melody or rhythm or a, a sound to it that awakens hearts to love. And so, Lord, I thank you for that. Lord, I also sensed a real strong gifting for missions, whether that's to go or help people to go or where you're gonna put nations in her heart. Or she'll go and come back. But Lord, I just thank you for that. Lord, I, I thank you for the, the gift of worship that's already upon her life. In Jesus' name, bless you guys. I saw the Lord doing this. He just came alongside of you like this and put his hand on your shoulder. And it was like this great gift to live life with the Lord. And I, I saw your feet in cement and your head in the clouds. Asked the Lord what it was meant, what he meant by that, and he just simply said, I made him a pillar. I made him a pillar. I made him a part of the foundation, but I've also given him eyes to see beyond where he's at, where, what he sees. And I, I just felt like, um, Lord said, I've anointed you for secret service. And we know that secret service protects the president and all, all of those things. But I felt like the Lord said that you're gonna serve the secrets of the Lord. I think sometimes people get prophecies and revelation, if you like, we gotta put it out through a microphone or a message or Facebook or all of those things. When the truth is, he's sometimes just looking for a friend he can share his secrets with. And I just felt like that, that's the thing that the Lord is stirring up in you and bringing you into in this season. Is bringing in that place of friendship with God. I've been, I've been thinking about this lately. My kids are growing up and three of them are now adults. And they've become mature in the Lord. They've become mature in the natural and what I'm finding with my mature sons and, and daughters is this, they're not just sons and daughters, but they're actually becoming friends. And I, I feel like that that's gonna be a season of, as you've come to this place of maturing in your walk with the Lord. It's like you're gonna know the deep friendship of the Lord. And so, Lord, I just thank you for that. Lord, I thank you for all the benefits of that. In Jesus' name. Lord, I thank you for this man of God. And I saw Jesus with his hands on his chin like his elbow's on the table. And he was intently listening to you. And it was like he hung on every word you said, because you've hung on every word he said. Well, this is what I heard the Lord say to tell you, he loves your stories. And I felt, this may sound kinda funny, but I heard the Lord say, I could listen to him talk all day. And it was like the Lord was sitting there just listening to you talk all day. And it wasn't just about, I remember when, I remember when, I remember when. It's actually, you were actually telling stories from the past, the present, but also telling stories into the future. We often talk about our ceilings become the next generation's floor. You live that, but I felt like the Lord said there's some more ceilings and floors for you. And I, I just feel like the Lord's bringing you to this place of deep trust, like he was inviting you, inviting you in to places of his heart. He was inviting you in to say, this is not just what I'm doing, but here's how I'm going to do it. Lord, I thank you for a man who studies to show himself approved. I'm not talking about knowing the book all the time. But I, I, I felt like this. I feel like the name of this season or part of this season for you is experiencing God. And I feel like part of what you're gonna activate and help people with is teaching them how to experience God. I saw bricks and blocks and I saw you placing them and fitting them, like what Peter talks about. Jointly fit stones. There's no more, they just fit and they're strong just with how they're laid and how they're put. And I feel like that Lord said, you're gonna place living stones. Because you're a builder in the spirit. I saw you building people up with your words, building people up with your stories. So Lord, I bless them in that. Lord, I thank you for this amazing woman of God. Lord, I thank you. I, I saw the Lord just beaming, a beaming smile looking at you. And Lord says, she's known how to, to smile and grin and push her way through it. The Lord says, you've been through a lot, but there's been more victories than burdens. And I don't fully under, know what this means, but I felt like the Lord said, this is the season where you're going faith to faith, glory to glory, mountain to mountain. It's almost like there's this place of where the Lord said, I brought you through seasons of contention, but now you're in the place of, of joy and fulfillment. But I thank you for that which she's about to see with her own eyes. You're not just gonna see the goodness of God, but I, I feel like the Lord said, you're gonna see the salvation of the Lord among people you've prayed for, for a long period of time. You're gonna watch the salvation of the Lord come to people and circumstances and situations. This is this statement I'm about to make, I think is really powerful. And it blesses me saying it to you because I'm gonna give it to you, but I'm also gonna receive it for myself. Lord said to tell you, it's the year of answered prayer. Lord, I thank you for the year of answered prayer. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. I, I saw two words. And the words almost seem contrary, but I believe they're actually complementary. Simplicity and complexity. Simplicity and complexity. Simplicity and complexity. I feel like you carry the presence of the Lord and the things of God in, in a way that it's so simple, it's, it's complex and so complex that it's simple, like it's, it's simple for people to understand, but yet at the same time, people who are always trying to figure it out and that are heady, it makes them think. And I, I, I felt like that people are gonna say this to you a lot in the days ahead. You've given me something to think about. But it won't be that they just, they're just thinking about it. They're, they're actually gonna have what you share written on their hearts. And I saw the Lord putting a pen in your hand and it was like I saw you writing things on their heart. The words you speak won't go to the head. The words you speak to people, the things that you do aren't just surface deep, but they go right to the heart. And I feel like the Lord's anointed you to bring, as a minister of the heart to the heart. I saw you directing people, almost like a, a traffic cop, directing people into the heart of God. But, but I thank you for light bulbs for, I just saw like, like light bulbs going on, like revelation here and an idea here. And I, I saw like a, not quite an incubator, but you know, when babies are born and they put them in the, that bassinet in the hospital. It was like, I, I felt like the Lord was putting your dreams there and I just kept hearing the Lord say, happy birthday. Like it's a season where dreams were being birthed, being, being fulfilled and coming to pass. And, uh, Lord, I thank you right now, tha- that, that which has been tested over time. That which has been sifted through time, Lord, is about to have its birthday, is about to have its day. Okay, I just kept seeing Galatians six eight, don't be weary and well doing for induced season, you'll reap if you faint not. And so, Lord, I thank you. It's time to reap. It's time to see things come to fruition, come to pass. Well, I thank you for this man of God. Lord, I thank you for the gift of character. But, but I thank you for light bulbs for, I just saw like, like light bulbs going on, like revelation here and an idea here. And I, I saw like a, not quite an incubator, but you know, when babies are born and they put them in the, that bassinet in the hospital. It was like, I, I felt like the Lord was putting your dreams there and I just kept hearing the Lord say, happy birthday. Like it's a season where dreams were being birthed, being, being fulfilled and coming to pass. And, uh, Lord, I thank you right now, tha- that, that which has been tested over time. That which has been sifted through time, Lord, is about to have its birthday, is about to have its day. Okay, I just kept seeing Galatians six eight, don't be weary and well doing for induced season, you'll reap if you faint not. And so, Lord, I thank you. It's time to reap. It's time to see things come to fruition, come to pass. Well, I thank you for this man of God. Lord, I thank you for the gift of character. I, I, I watched the hands of the Lord just form and shape your life and when I looked, like his hands weren't callous. It wasn't like he had applied great pressure because you've been easy to mold. It's, he's the potter, you're the clay. Some of us, he has to chisel out. But for you, you've been pliable in the hands of the Lord. Brother, you may not even fully realize it, but I heard the Lord said it. The Lord said, this is a son who's been absolutely abandoned to obedience. You've obeyed the Lord even when it didn't make sense. It didn't make sense to give this. It didn't make sense to do this. It didn't. But you stepped out in faith and your faith has pleased the Lord. I felt something beautiful just standing by the two of you looking your direction tonight. I felt the pleasure of the Lord. The pleasure of the Lord. Uh, and the Lord just said that he's made your marriage a landing strip. Like I saw the Lord just coming in for a landing over the two of you and I feel like that you're, the Lord said that you're carrying miracles for the hour. I don't know if you ever, you know, an hourglass is where you turn it over and the salt or the sand kinda goes through and my mom had one that was an egg timer and I've always been fascinated with him cause it tells me how precious time is or how, it's a, just a reminder. But I just felt like the Lord said to tell you that the timing, his timing is perfect. The timing of the Lord is perfect. So, Lord, I thank you for good times and God times. Full steam ahead. In Jesus' name, in Jesus' name. Heard the Lord say that you're one who's very intentional and so intentional that certain things are just automatic. That you just have these automatic responses to the Lord, automatic responses to his presence, auto, like you don't even have to think about it because it's who you are. And I felt like the, the Lord has, I was walking over here and the Lord said, I've made her a Holy Spirit arsenal. And I saw just the explosive power of God coming out of you and it was like unassuming and people didn't, almost like people would feel the presence of God or feel his power without knowing what hit them. And I just felt like the Lord said, in a world and sometimes in the, the world of the church that waits for God to touch us, I felt like the Lord said to tell you that you touch him. And I just feel like there is this place that, that inside of you that you're content with him, but it's like you're not satisfied because you know there's more. I heard the words of an old love song and the words are, how sweet it is to be loved by you. And I feel like that's a theme song for you and your relationship with the Lord. And he was just singing how sweet it is to be loved by you. But I thank you that, Lord, her words are dipped with honey and Lord, she's gonna speak healing words over people and circumstances and situations. I hear people just dumping on you, telling you all their problems and you go, oh, honey, just don't give up. Like I, I feel like there's this heart on the inside of you that just says, you can make it. Cause you have this grace to believe all things. Lord, I thank you for this man of God. Lord, I thank you that he's an anchor. Or an anchor in your house and an anchor of hope to the world around him. And I, I just saw like all of these moments, these pictures, these little kind of movie clips, previews, if you will, of your life. And it's like every scenario, like I look for the, I looked at the eyes of the Lord and he was constantly panning, looking for you. And I feel like the Lord wants you to know you're not gonna miss a thing, like you're gonna be in the midst, in the middle of it all. But I saw the scripture, I think it's first or second Chronicles, six eight or twenty-six. Uh, the eyes of the Lord go to and fro the earth, looking to find those that are loyal to him, that it could show forth his strong right hand. And I just felt like the Lord said, he's one loyal son. And the Lord has, as you've been seeking the Lord, the, the Lord's been seeking you. And I saw his strong right hand, which speaks to me of the power of God. But it's like this, I, I saw the open-handed blessing of the Lord. Sometimes people pray to get God to open his hand, but when you know his heart, you know his hand's already open, with every good and perfect gift. So Lord, I just thank you for that. Lord, I thank you for the gifts, the open-handed blessing that's coming. In Jesus' name. But I thank you for this cool dude who's behaved a whole lot better than I did at thirteen in church. So, but I, I thank you, that, Lord, he's a go-getter. I, I feel like he's one that's gonna take people by the hand all the time and say, come on, come on, go and see, come and see. I wanna show you the fort I built. I wanna show you the thing that I'm doing. And I feel like the Lord said he's, he's kind of, um, like Home Depot. Doers get more done. And I, I, I feel like that he's gonna know how to assemble, how to put things and people together. And I feel like there's such a strong gift of leadership on his life that people will just follow, almost follow blindly because he's gonna have a proven track record. There's a beautiful thing to know as a little young man that he's gonna know that this is the way of the Lord and walk in it. But I thank you for the gift of the champion in him. He's gonna be the best. He's gonna be really great at a lot of things, but he's gonna have the humility to maintain it. So Lord, I just thank you for that gift. But I, I thank you for his good sister over here. Lord, Lord, I thank you for the, I mean, I love the gifts of the spirit and I believe they're gonna operate in your life, but the Lord loves the fruit of your life already. Just gentleness and kindness. But I also feel like the Lord is gonna give you like this gift of strength to just speak the heart of God. You're gonna speak to people in a way that it just opens the eyes of their understanding that people say, I never thought of it like that before. And Lord, I pray that you would just release the gifts of healing through her. That she would lay, lay hands on people that are hurting or have pain or that are sick and she'd see them recover. And Lord, she's a great believer. But thanks for this amazing mama. It's a beautiful picture of the grace on your life, but I saw a candle with two wicks in the same candle. And I heard that old phrase, burning the candle at both ends. And I, I felt like the, the, often it's like constant on the go, up early, up late and burning the candle at both ends. And I saw the Lord giving you what maybe you wouldn't feel like you have enough of. And I saw the Lord giving you the gift of time. Years ago, there was this commercial and this kids were screaming in the house, dogs tracking in mud through the house and the mom just went to the bathtub and put her head under the bubbles and said, Calgon, take me away. And, uh, for you, it wasn't just Calgon. It was like, Holy Spirit, take me away. And it was like, I, I felt like there was gonna come these moments of refreshing, even in the midst, in the middle of it all. And I, I feel like there's a grace on your life, like most moms would be light sleepers at different times, cause you're listening for the cry of the kid or the, but I felt like the Lord said, I'm gonna bring you from light sleeping to deep sleep. To a place of deep rest and dreaming again. And I feel like the Lord's gonna give you new dreams. But I also believe the Lord's about to give you the dreams of God. And Lord, I just thank you right now Lord, for the gift of just juggling and all the different hats that have to be worn in a day. But Lord, I thank you, Lord, for special moments, precious and special moments that are marked, that are earmarked from heaven just for her. I don't know if this makes sense to you, but I just saw like the Lord winking at you like, hey, I'm giving you the nods of heaven, the winks of heaven. The approval of heaven. Lord, I thank you for that. I don't know if you journal, probably don't even have time to do it, but I, I saw the Lord just jotting things down through you. You might wanna even revisit grocery lists and to-do lists. Cause even if you're riding through the list, it's almost like the Lord's gonna hide prophetic words and nuggets in there for you. But I thank you that you care about every little detail of our life. And so, Lord, I thank you for even, Lord, as I shared earlier tonight about finding even miracles in the mundane. Lord, I thank you, that's what you're about to do in her and for her. In Jesus' name. But I thank you for this amazing daughter. Lord, I, I thank you. And Lord, she carries you well. She carries your heart well. She represents you well. One of the meanings or definitions of identities, if you will, of Holy Spirit is our parochial, one who comes alongside, one who puts his hands on our shoulders and encourages, exhorts us to keep going. And I, I felt like that was such a gift on the inside of you. One of the things that I love about my wife and certain friends that I have is they kinda come alongside and they help carry the weight, whatever I'm carrying, whatever I'm going through, and they shoulder it with me. And I saw you doing that. I saw you lightening people's loads, almost like doing things without even anybody else asking you. Here's a really cool word. I mean, it's, I, I saw the Lord anointing you with this gift. It's called initiative. Where you see what needs to be done and you just do it. Like you're not asking, waiting for somebody to tell you. It's like, you see it and you do it. And I saw the Lord just writing it down, cause he's a good keeper of the records. I don't know what kind of allowance you get, but it, it should be more. Don't tell your parents I said that. But, but I saw just the, the allowance of heaven. I saw just the resources of heaven flowing over to fulfill every dream in your heart. Like, I feel like the promise of the Lord for you as a teenager and the promise of the Lord when you get fully grown and married and all of those things is there'll never be lack in your house. There'll always be provision for the dream that the Lord has for you. And I, I saw you being one who makes your own trends, who sets your own trends. Like I saw you wearing things and putting things together that some people, you know, fashionistas would say that doesn't go together, but you make it go together and people are gonna follow that trend. Cause you're not moved by public opinion. You're moved by his heart, what you like. I got really good news for you. The Lord doesn't just love you, but he likes you a lot. He has to love everybody, but I think there's certain ones that he likes because you're disagreeable with him. So, Lord, I just thank you. Again, this may sound simple, but the Lord said to tell you that you hold a special place in his heart. Here's what I've discovered, that the Lord has created a dimension in his heart just for me. He's created a dimension in his heart just for you. And only you can satisfy that place or fulfill that place. And he said to tell you that you do it well. And I pray that all the days of her life, she would see what I hadn't seen. She would hear what ear hasn't heard. She would know what nobody's known. She would know it in her heart, in her spirit. For all the things that you're preparing for those and for her because she loves you. In Jesus' name, Lord, I thank you for your son. Lord, I thank you for a man steady on his feet. Brother, I think it's Isaiah twenty-six. It says, talks about ones being faithful who are steady on their feet because they know that in the Lord they have a sure thing. I heard a word that, that you wouldn't hear very often in today's world. But the Lord said that you're consistent, like there's a consistency about you. And one of the greatest gifts that you have isn't gifts that you have isn't what you say or what you do or your gifts are. It's actually in this place, is that you show up. And I feel like there's a grace on your life that you just show up in the right place at the right time. Sometimes it's 'cause it's needed, and sometimes it's expected, and sometimes just 'cause you know it's, it's the right thing to do. And I, I just felt like the Lord was rallying the honor guard of heaven around your life. And I, I felt like the word celebration was ringing out in my heart for you. And I, I don't know the full context of what this means, but I heard the Lord say, "Get ready to be celebrated." And I asked the Lord, "What's the occasion? Is it a specific birthday? Is it some promotion?" And the Lord said, "No, I want him celebrated simply because..." Brother, it's tremendous what I'm feeling. I wish I could describe it in my limited language to you. But you're about to know the celebration of the Lord just because. And I, I saw joy like exploding on the inside of you, maybe for the first time in a while and I don't know, I've been standing here and I had a picture of a desert. And the Lord said to tell you that he's bringing an end to places what you felt were like in drought. And I saw just the rain of his goodness, the rain of his glory, the rain of refreshing coming over you. Whether that's for something that you're walking through or experiencing, or possibly the fact that you're actually gonna be that as well for other people. And maybe this sounds unusual, but I felt like the Lord said, "Your family's gonna be like a well-watered garden along the streams of life." I don't know what you've been waiting for, waiting on, believing for, trusting in. But, but I felt the celebration of heaven, like the Lord was saying it's done. So, Lord, I thank you for what you're bringing to pass. Two of my favorite sayings in the Bible are, "And it shall come to pass." But even more, I like it when it says, "And it came to pass." And I feel like you're gonna move from one into the other, from "And it shall" and into "And it came to pass." So, thanks for what you're bringing to pass, Lord, in Jesus' name. Lord, thanks for your amazing son. I heard these words, "He carries me well." And I, I saw your life like a vessel and heard the words of that song or chorus, "Lord, make me a vessel, make me an offering." And I, I saw your life being a vessel that is just, not only is your life laid down, but it's a life that's poured out. I heard the sound of corks popping and I felt like the Lord said he's opening up the reserves for you. And like anything and everything that's been held back is about to be released. But also, I felt like reserves are held for special moments and special times. And I saw the reserves of heaven just being opened up over you, like he's holding nothing back from you. Lord, I thank you for streams of abundance flowing. Or thank you for this amazing woman of God. I saw the Lord with putting like a napkin in his shirt. Saw him with knife and fork in hand. And he was sitting at the table with great expectation. And I asked the Lord what it meant, and he simply said, "She's bringing me my favorites." And it was like, everything you brought to him was like, "That's my favorite, that's my favorite, that's my favorite." Because everything you do is with love, everything you cook is with love, everything you serve is with love. And I, I saw like the Lord filling your tank, like bringing to this place of just overflow. Lord, I, I thank you right now for the fresh infilling. Or for a life saturated with your presence. Lord, I just thank you for the season of, of the more of God. Again, it may sound like a simple prayer, but for you, I just pray more, Lord. From the top of her head to the soles of her feet, Lord, everything she pours out for everyone else, or would you fill her up to overflowing? In Jesus' name, I thank you for this superhero of a young man next to her. Lord, I thank you that, Lord, he's gonna be known for his choices. He's gonna be known for making the right choice. But I thank you that, Lord, he's one that is a role model and an example of what love looks like. Like, I, I feel like for him, he's gonna require very little correction, 'cause he's so tender-hearted towards God, like, "I know what I want." Here's the best way to describe. I feel a tremendous gentleness on his life, but he's gonna be a, a man and a young man and a boy of strong conviction. I think one of the things that's missing today is people are moved by every little thing that comes, because there's no conviction. And I feel like that people are gonna get around him and they're gonna feel convicted because of the presence of God and the purity of heart that he carries. So, Lord, I thank you for the son of right choices, in Jesus' name. But I thank you for Batman. But I thank you for the gift that he is. He's gonna be known for his deep friendships. Like, he's gonna have just lifelong people in his life that they're just best friends, doing great exploits for the Lord. And I believe we all get our own anointing, so I don't try to compare, but he's carrying similar to what was upon Daniel in the Bible. It's character, it's grace, it's calling. He won't bow to a culture and society, but he'll continually raise the bar for people to step up into. And I just feel like there's a gift of a defender upon his life, like he will be a voice for the voiceless and a defender of the weak. His prayers will intervene in the affairs and the lives of people. People will ask him, maybe even family will ask him, "How'd you know that?" And he'll just know, 'cause God tells him. But I thank you for the gift of, of walking in such communion with you that he would know your voice all the days of his life, in Jesus' name. Brother, I saw, um, like packages and envelopes that were marked like airmail or overnight. Things that were tagged or marked like special delivery. And I feel like that's what's being carried or about to be delivered to you, but I also feel like that's what you're carrying for the Lord, that which is extra special and valuable. There's a tremendous gift on your life of whatsoever, wheresoever, whosoever. It's kinda like, "Whatever you need, Lord, I'll do that." That last song we sang, "Lord, take me anywhere." "I'll go anywhere, I'll do anything, just put your glory in me." I feel like you're gonna have that fulfilled in your life, like... I think there's Sunday Christians, I think there's conference Christians, I think there's Sunday and Wednesday night Christians, I think there's good Christians, and, but then there's everyday Christians. That their church life and their ministry life isn't any different than their natural life. I feel like you're raising sons who'll live naturally supernatural. But I also feel like there's a fresh infusion, that childlike faith causing you to live the same. You're a strong believer, but you're also an amazing thinker. And I saw this gift to contemplate, to think about things. Not so much to figure them out, but to know the hows behind the whats of God. But I thank you for the gifts of explanation and demonstration over his life. Son, you may know this, or maybe your humility would sidestep this, but I felt like the Lord said he wants you to know you're brilliant. So, Lord, I just thank you for the brilliance of the Lord that you placed upon him, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. A few years ago, probably before you were born, we were singing songs in church, then one of the words of the phrases of the song where you stole my heart, "Yes, you have," and kind of people were singing it to the Lord, but I felt like the Lord was singing it back over you. That there's just pieces of his heart that he just couldn't help but give you. Lord said he's made you to be a boss, but not bossy. Maybe a little bossy, but, but a boss. I saw you giving people direction, just saying to do that. And it's not like, "Do this to be my friend," it's like, "I know that this is good and this is right." And I, I feel like that throughout your life, people will do the right thing, 'cause they saw you doing it. One of my favorite sayings is, "Preach the gospel always and when necessary, use words." In other words, let people see Jesus in us, let's see, let people see Jesus on us. And that's what I saw in you. But I saw this notebook and this drawing tablet and all these creative things, and I saw you creating with the Lord. I saw you making jewelry and it was more than just a craft. It was like doing something that the Lord said, "Oh, I really like that." I'm not telling you what to do, but I, I saw you making some things that will actually get sold to help people to go on missions trips or to feed people, like there's creativity in you, but even greater than the creativity is the ideas in you. And I love the fact that for all of eternity, God has been, is, and will always be a creator. And the expression of his creativity is gonna, is gonna flow through you in a beautiful way. And so, Lord, I thank you for the one who seals your heart. Would I bless her in that? Brother, I heard, as I was ministering to her, I looked at you at one point, and the Lord said, "Say la." And in the Psalms, there's all of these times where it goes, "Say la," just as in the side note. Means, "Hey, let this get your attention, think about it, ponder it." But it, it's also like a comma, so it's a continuation. It's where man puts in a period and says, "It's over, you come to the end of something." God puts in a comma and says, "New beginnings." And I, I feel like that you're gonna have a series of new beginnings or... I guess a better way to express what I'm seeing is I saw double doors opening, and I, I felt like the Lord said, "It's a season of new opportunities." And I, and I just felt like every time I open my eyes and look at you, one word screams out, and it's promotion. And I feel like the, the Lord, you've caught the attention of the Lord, and he's about to bring you into a place of promotion. I believe it's natural and spiritual. So, Lord, I thank you for that. Lord, I just thank you, Lord, again, for a word that maybe isn't used a whole lot today, but, Lord, you've anointed him as one who's steadfast. So, Lord, I thank you for that. You've made him in many ways like a rock, a foundational one. Would I bless him in that? Would I thank you for this amazing woman of God who is pretty cool. I, I saw you with one of those baton things that people through direct choirs or symphonies or orchestras or bands has. And I saw you just kind of directing the flow of everything. And where some people have to make lists or put things on calendars, it's just kinda like you just knew and you just flowed with it. And I saw you kind of just creating, organizing, putting structure around flows of things that made people's lives easier. I don't fully understand the word, and I think I say that a lot, because I'm not supposed to, 'cause it's not for me, it's for you. But, but I heard the word innovator or innovations around your life, and it's just making things better, it's incorporating things, allowing people to see it. And I was like, I, I, you know, to someone else, I say, "Connecting the dots," but for you, it's kinda like bringing the puzzle together, putting in the missing pieces. There's great wisdom in you and great knowledge in you, and I, I felt like the Lord said to pray that from, I think it's Ephesians 1:15 to 17, "Now may the Lord give to you the spirit of revelation, knowledge, and wisdom." And I feel like those things are, three things are growing and cult, being cultivated on the inside of you. And I, I, I saw like, remember those books, and when we had books before everything was on a tablet or a phone? And you opened the book and it was a pop-up book, like all of a sudden, the story came alive. And I, I feel like that's a gift or a grace on your life that makes the story come alive, makes the scripture come alive, makes the experience come alive. And I, I almost felt like the Lord said, "Things are gonna be true to the truth," meaning they, they stay true to the truth and not exaggerated. But I almost felt like there is this animation or this excitement or this ability to, to make the story come alive. It's, it's the ability to take a deep revelation and make it so simple that a child could understand it. So, it's not just teaching kids how to swim in the shallow end of the pool, but it's actually teaching them how to to deep dive into things of the Spirit. And I feel like you're carrying that well. And, uh, Lord, I thank you for, Lord, this son, Lord, I thank you. Lord, he's doing what we all wanna be doing, especially me. Lord, resting in you. Really cool word. I saw Matthew, chapter three, when Jesus is baptized, "Holy Spirit descends in the form of a dove. Father said, 'This is my beloved Son, whom I'm well pleased.'" The King James says it like this, that the, the dove, the Holy Spirit alighted on him, which means that he just hovered there because he wasn't disturbed, he felt at home, he felt at peace. And I feel like that's what this son is carrying. Where Holy Spirit isn't troubled by him, isn't grieved by, like, all the days of his life, just the Lord was alighting on him 'cause he pleased, 'cause the Holy Spirit rested upon him. And I feel like this, when the Lord, the, the Holy Spirit's just resting upon him. And I, I felt like the Lord said, "Boy, can he talk." And I just feel like there's just this amazing gift of a communicator in him. And, and I feel like he's a really, really good boy. But at times, he's gonna have two speeds, like full on and then drop sleep, right? It's it's no winding down and like his feet hit the floor in the morning, he's full of it and ready to go until that point, like now, where he just, he's done. And, and, and I think that's a part of his life, and it's gonna be just, it's gonna be consistent. He's gonna know how to go with the flow, but he's also gonna thrive- He's gonna know how to go with the flow, but he's also gonna thrive in structure. And it's a beautiful thing. So would I just bless this amazing family? Lord, I just thank you for the outpouring of your love and your grace, Lord, in their house, in Jesus' name. It's gonna sound really funny and I really like, Lord, why do I have to do this? But I heard the words of this old song, and the Lord was just singing, wild thing, you make my heart sing. And, and like, I just felt like this. And I know why he's doing it, like he's like, you speak his same language. But here's, here's a word that, man, I felt it when I put my hand on your shoulder, the Lord said, passion. And I, I felt like the, the Lord, he's always alive and lively, but the Lord was like saying, she makes my passions come alive. Something happens when spouses dream the same thing, or when somebody speaks my same dream language or my, you know, shares my passions. And I, I felt like that, you know, you don't just share the burden of the Lord, but you share the passion of the Lord. And I, I felt like that word about seeing the salvation of the Lord that I said corporately tonight, is a specific word for you, that you're gonna see the salvation of the Lord, even among people that seemed like they were the most resistant to it. And I just felt like people sharing testimonies in years to come, like man, I could not run her prayers, I couldn't, I couldn't say no forever. And it was almost like the Lord wasn't wearing them down, like in a difficult way, but the, like the the long suffering or the persistence of the Lord where you're concerned is, is, is amazing to me. But that's what I felt like, that, that the Lord said, she just doesn't stop, she just continually, continually digs in. Here's a beautiful way to say it, the Lord said, she lives a life that's fully persuaded. Fully persuaded that he's able, fully persuaded that he's good, fully persuaded that he will. So Lord, I thank you for the full persuasion of the Lord. But I thank you that she's your wild thing. And she makes your heart sing. How was church last night? I don't know, that crazy guy said that I was a wild thing. So, cool picture, I saw you with a hard hat on and a shovel. And I saw you just digging in the ground, digging in the dirt, digging in the dirt. And I asked the Lord what it was, and the Lord said, she's digging for gold. I ascribe it to the prophetic, like anybody digging for dirt can find dirt. Anybody digging for gold can even find the dirt, but it takes a train to eye to look past the dirt to find the gold. And I feel like that you're a gold miner, that you're one that's continually cultivating, willing to get your hands dirty to bring forth what is valuable and what the Lord said and promised from the beginning. And it's like if you're onto something, you don't let go of it, and then and sometimes people go, mom, can't you just get off of it? And, and the answer is no, because it's important. Here's a word we don't like very much in the church anymore, and so the word discipline. Because we think it's negative, like I'm getting in trouble. But there's the disciplines of life, which are fasting and prayer, giving and solitude. And I felt like that word solitude, in the midst of all of the busy and your house being like everybody's gathering place and the Lord's about to give you incredible moments of solitude. And I just felt like the Lord said to tell you, he's so thankful for you because you'd never stopped digging. So Lord, I just thank you for those deep minds of the Spirit, those deep revelations that she's digging out. But also the gold she's finding, the gold she's bringing forth in your kingdom. Gold and glory are the same word in Hebrew. And I feel like it's, it's a year of the resources of heaven and the, the presence of heaven on your life. But it's also the fruit and the harvest of heaven. And so would I thank you for that, for the harvest of her heart? In Jesus' name. Or thanks for this amazing daughter to her right side. And I saw, I saw two podiums, like that would be on a debate stage. Like, and I, I felt like, almost like people couldn't argue with you. They would try to debate facts, but it was like you had this ability to speak truth. What they were saying was what they felt was true, but you kept speaking truth. Because truth wasn't an idea or a philosophy, truth was a person, his name is Jesus. And what I, I felt was this, is that, I'm not saying that you're an arguer or a debater. But, but the Lord has given you a gift to persuade people to, to truth, like, oh, I believe it, she, simply because of this. And hear me, because this could be the, the greatest thing somebody could ever say, or the Lord could say about somebody. It's one of the things that the Lord loves about you and why people are gonna be drawn to you your whole day, all the days of your life. Is there's nothing hypocritical in you. What you see is what you get. And, and how you live and what you believe lines up. And so would I just thank you for that? I started to say it earlier and got distracted. But, but the Lord made up a word for me or with me a few months back. And the word was perfect. So he didn't call us to be perfect, he called us to be pure, and you put those together and you get perfect. And I, I feel like that your life is gonna represent that. It's, it's, it's this perfection, this purity of heart and perfect pursuit of the Lord. And Lord, I just thank you that the favor of the Lord's upon her and surrounds her like a shield. Here's a, here's a cool statement, the Lord says, many people are gonna say, where'd she come from? Like she came out of nowhere. And I don't know if you do anything athletically, I try not to because I get hurt, but but it was almost like I saw you taking the winning shot, I saw you just being in these moments where it was just, it was set up for you to step into it, right at the right time, and people are like, where'd she come from? And I'll tell you where you came from, you came from heaven. I feel like you carry the fragrance of the Lord. And, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to be cliche or cute, but I felt like the Lord said, you're gonna carry heaven's scent. I think that comes from a life of walking worship, and so Lord, I bless her in that. Lord, I thank you for Lord, your amazing daughter on the other side and I saw Jesus on his tippy toes. I've never seen Jesus on his tippy toes. And he said this funny phrase, he said, she keeps me on my toes. Like you never know what she's gonna ask, you never know what she's gonna do, she's and there's a part of you that is so amazingly great, like it's spontaneous. Yet there's a part of you that's this mastermind, that just thinks things through and sees them to completion. There's a beautiful word from the Lord, it's a describes you, but it's also a promise for you. And it's, the Lord said that you're really hard to say no to. And, and here's a why. You've got faith. You actually believe there's favor on your life, you actually believe what you hear taught and preached and it's not just motions, but, but it's actually conviction, it's actually you know, a part of you. So Lord, I thank you for the now faith is season of her life. I heard the Lord say, thank you for loving people enough to tell them the truth. It's in, in love most of the time. Right? It's, you, you love people enough to tell them the truth so they don't stay the same. And it's a beautiful thing. So, so Lord, I just thank you for that. I saw a standing ovation in heaven for you. And you're an unsung hero. Sometimes an unseen superstar. You thrive behind the scenes. You kind of like being in the middle of the pack or don't even really mind being on the back row. Because your nature's a giver. You give and you give and you give and you give, and you don't really ask for anything in return. But I heard the Lord say to tell you, it's the season where he's asking you, what do you need and what you, what do you want? In other words, you don't have to just sell them what you need as daily bread, but he's inviting you to dream with him. And to ask beyond what you think you deserve. It's a season of Holy Spirit reciprocation. Jesus said that the last should be first and the first should be last. So there's a repositioning for you. One of my favorite sayings that my friend preaches is that Jesus served like a king and he ruled like a servant. And there's a meekness in you, which is power and strength under control. And you just live it. But I'm telling you right now, the roar of your authority is about to be heard. I don't know how to explain it. But I just feel like that even in your whisper, your voice shakes the heavens. Your anointing causes demons to tremble. And I, I felt like the Lord said, you've, you've been anointed to bring people into alignment. Kind of like the gift of a Holy Spirit chiropractor, brings adjustment and alignment. Because you and the Lord are in agreement. So would I bless her in that, in Jesus' name? Here's a really cool word. I saw you on the keys and the Lord just whispered this word to me, she's stellar. And again, that's an unusual word that's not used much today, but it was like this, like it was stellar, it was beyond expectation. And I, I felt like the, the Lord said that he's, he's handing you keys. They're kingdom keys, but they're also like master keys, they don't just open a door, they open every door. Because you, because you're trusted. I saw the trust of heaven. Some people play by note, play by what's written on the sheet. I saw you playing by ear, and it wasn't your own ear, it was your ear to God's heart and the ears of God's heart to your fingers. It was like this the sound of his heart. Here's a couple more words that we don't use too much. I heard the Lord say captivated and mesmerized. And I, I saw you just captivating the attention, captivating the heart of God. But I also feel like it's a season of getting caught up in the goodness of God, caught up in the his loving kindness that's better than life. Here's where you'll be with the secrets of God. It's really unusual, I've never heard him phrase it quite like this before. He said, you wanna know what keeps me up at night? And I'm thinking, Lord, you don't sleep and you don't slumber, so you're always up, so whether it's night or day, doesn't matter. But it was like he was, he was letting you feel, he's gonna let you feel and know his heart, the things that he thinks about, the things that are on his heart, on his mind. Because he trusts you with him. It's a bigger word than maybe we can feel or comprehend. But Lord, I thank you, that Lord, she's a carrier of your promises. Carrier of your promises. Would I thank you for this amazing son? Some of the best leaders do more and say less. I guess my friends or my kids and friends and generation that they speak a different language than I speak and when something's cool or they agree with, they say, say less, say less. And when they first started saying it to me, I'm like, what, you don't want me to talk to you? But they were saying, no, like, it's true, it's right. Brother, I saw the scripture in Proverbs that said, a good name is to be desired above riches. And I feel like the Lord has given you a good name, and I, I felt like that his name is safe in your mouth, but your name is also safe in his. And I saw people like, when they're looking for people to do certain jobs or do certain things, like your name is gonna be, hey, get this guy, he's the best. And I just feel like that, that's what you're gonna be known by, like he does what he says and he says what he does. Lord, I thank you for the miracles in their house. And I'd like to be a whole lot more specific with you, but maybe you know what this means or it'll play out. But I feel like that yours, a house, is a house of miracles, and I just kept hearing the Lord said, there's a miracle in the house. In the same way that the jar of oil never ran out, the flower never ran out, the I just feel like that there's a miracle in the house, that everything that you need is in the house. So would I just thank you, just for the outpouring of your love, your goodness, your grace upon him? In Jesus' name. Heard the lyrics of the old Gaither song. And he walks with me and he talks with me and he tells me I am his own. And I just saw you just tending the garden of God. Pulling every weed and watering it right and caring for the roots and we live in kind of a fertilize, miracle grow society where everybody wants it fast. And anybody who likes tomatoes knows that a vine ripened tomato in a garden tastes a lot better than a hothouse tomato. Maybe I'm just hungry, but what I felt like the Lord said is, most people don't like process. But you're a process guy. You've not been one who's tried to bypass the process, it's Lord, I'll just do it right the first time, save us a whole lot of trouble and pain. And what an amazing gift you are, sir. To the Lord and to us, because you choose to do it right the first time. There's something that happens when you marry his heart to your heart. His will to your will, his purpose to your purpose. And you set out to do that in word and in deed. I'm not saying you ever have, but even when you missed it, people couldn't question your heart because the heart was right. Lord, I thank you for a man whose heart has been kept right. That's something to be celebrated in the day and age which we live in. Or thanks for this amazing daughter. You're kind of like super glue. You hold things together. You're an adhesive, you bring it together, you hold it together. And you make it work. You've had this gift your whole life of just whatever came your way of making it work. Again, don't wanna be cliche, but it's like if you got lemon, you made lemonade, if it's, like, you just knew what to do with what you had. It's, you've learned how to be faithful in every season, like Paul told Timothy, be faithful in season and out of season. You've not only been faithful in season and out of season, you've been faithful in every season. And, uh, Lord, I just thank you. This is gonna sound real silly perhaps, but Lord said, "Get ready to bump into God." I saw you bumping into him in the kitchen, bumping into him, just doing everyday life. God's stories coming out of God moments. Lord, I thank you for that, God's stories and God moments in the everyday. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Lord, I thank you. Lord, for this tremendous, amazing, beautiful, wonderful, awesome woman. I felt like the Lord was just giving you accolade after accolade after accolade and reason I, I sat down is not so much cause I'm tired. It's cause the Lord's favorite place is just sitting with you. But he was like releasing all of these accolades. And it was like, "Lord, I know that, but it's hard to receive right now, Lord, I know that, but..." And I, I feel like you're such a giver and everything you do is you give and you give, you give yourself away. But when it comes to receiving, you'd rather have everybody else receive. And this, again, this isn't correction, this isn't anything negative, but I heard the Lord say to tell you, "No more crumbs on the carpet." Like sometimes we set a feast for everybody else and we set the table and we feed them and we don't partake ourself, cause we're so busy making sure everybody else is okay. I've never heard the Lord say this and I wish he would say it to me and I wish he would've said it to me last night, cause I would've gone to bed earlier, he said, he said, "Tell you, don't worry, I'll do the dishes." I don't know what that means to you, but I, I felt like the Lord was saying, "Hey, I'm gonna create time that you don't have time for, I'm gonna do things for you and with you." It seems so basic and simple. Cause you find me in the simple things, you find me in the waiting, you find me in the doing. And I heard the Lord say, "Thanks for seeing things through." You're not one who starts, stops, starts, stops, but you actually see it through to the finish line. I'd rather be a sprinter than a marathon runner, cause it'd get it over, get the pain over quicker. But I feel like the Lord's conditioned you for the marathon and the spirit. It really helps us to do life with people, to not only cross over the finish line ourself, but to take a whole lot of people with us. And I feel like the grace upon your life is to take a bunch of people with you. There's something really beautiful about you, he said, "You're selfless." Every little thing you do, you do it for everyone else. I saw like a funnel over you and I saw, Lord, just pouring out oil through the funnel over you. And he says, "You've been marked for the blessing." You've been marked for the blessing. Lord, I just thank you right now. I, I just felt like encouragement from heaven's coming to you. Lord, I, I thank you for the way you're gonna show up in the little things. In Jesus' name. Just like the keyboard and the guitar and the drums and the voices. You're my instrument. I love to play your heartstrings. I love the rhythm of your heart, I love the tone of your thoughts. And I heard these words together, "I'm giving you the power to create." And I immediately wanted to ask the what, like, the power to create what? And the Lord just told me the why and the how instead. Said, "I'm giving her the power to create with her words." And I feel like the Lord said that you're gonna walk in the, in the, as you speak to people and to circumstances and things, you're, you're gonna create a kingdom, reality, you're gonna, it's, it's like you're gonna cause things to come full circle. And again, this may sound simple, but I think it's really beautiful with what the Lord is saying, he said to tell you that he sees you. He sees your obedience and your sacrifice, he sees you. He sees you when you're out there and he sees you when you're back here. And you know, maybe back here it's hard to be seen, but I saw the spotlight of heaven on you. Again, it's one of those things I don't have the full revelation on, but the Lord said to tell you that he just can't wait. And I, I believe what he's saying is he's just as excited about the promises that he's placed on the inside of you than you are. Or as you are. So, Lord, I just release, Lord, I, I thank you for the appreciation of heaven. The applause, the, the things, the thankfulness of heaven over her life, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Here's a word that if I were gonna give myself a word tonight, it's the word, one of the words I'd want. I put my hand on your shoulder and I heard the word effortless. Sometimes when there's this grace on your life, it just, it's not work, it's not hard, it's just effortless, cause I was made for this. And I feel like you're stepping into moments where you'll go, "I was made for this." For me, I, I started teaching in schools and ministry schools and prophetic schools and three years ago, when I stepped into one of those sessions, I suddenly had this awareness for the first time in my life that this is what I was created for. And I, I feel like that's where you're at and you're, you're in that place of, "This is what I was created for." To release the more of God and I felt like, that the last few years for you have been practiced, that, yeah, there've been accomplishments and fruit, but it's almost been practice for what's to come. And I saw gifts wrapped up with bows on them and I feel like it's a season where, where the Lord i- is about to bring things to the party, it's about to, it's about to release you into a season of unwrapping what you've carried your whole life. If you're on a mission this year, on a mission in this season, I would define it as a discovery mission. Where you're about to discover things that God didn't hide from you, but he hid for you. And, uh, Lord, I thank you for things that are about to be streamlined, I thank you for things that are about to be produced. Lord, I thank you for dreams in the night that are just little tweaks and ideas and for lack of better terms, like creating a better mousetrap or it's, it's, it's creating these things that are, they're, they're improved or they're, they're upgraded. So, Lord, just thank you for the upgrades that he carries and, Lord, how our lives are all, we benefit from it. 1 Corinthians 12 and 7 says, "But the gifts of the Spirit are given to, the gifts of the manifestation, the gifts are given to each one as he wills for the profit or the benefit of all." And I just felt like the Lord said, "Man, look at how many people are benefiting from what you're doing." Often, I'll watch movies or TV show or even preachers on TV. And you, you see the final product, but I like to stay and watch the credits. Cause that tells you who and what got everything done. Brother, I just saw the, just the credits of heaven, like I, I saw this running list of your name in so many places where the Lord was saying, "Maybe somebody else was out in front, but you're in the credits, not cause you asked for it, but because you reap the spoil and the reward of it." And Lord, just bless them, Lord, thank you for this season of effortless, in Jesus' name. Thanks for staying and playing behind me and I was walking from the back here to up here and I feel kinda woozy on my feet and I, I couldn't figure it out for a second, I asked the Lord what it was and the Lord said, "You're intoxicated, cause what she's playing is intoxicating." And I, I felt like the Lord said that the fragrance, the offering, the, that which you bring and you lay on the altar and release from the altar consumes him. And that song, "You're worthy of it all and day and night, night and day, let incense rise," I, I saw incense rising from your life, but I, I saw the attention of heaven coming and normally, you know, we talk about our praises going up and but I believe there's a, a moment where the, the sound of what we release and carry actually gets the attention and blends in with what's happening in heaven. And I feel like it's the best way to describe this next season of your life is just getting caught up in God, get, getting caught up in moments with him. But the end, I think it's the end of chapter 10 of Hebrews, it said, "Our God is an all-consuming fire." And I felt like the Lord said, "Thanks for living consumed." Consumed with him, consumed with his presence, you're gonna release a consuming presence. And even just as it just flows out of your life, it's gonna set people free from consumer Christianity. Where people are just coming to get instead of to, to give and not just coming to receive instead of just bringing their own offering. And I, I just felt like it's not just getting the notes right, but it's getting the heart right. And I, I just felt like just this, that the heart of God just flows through your voice, through your fingers. But it's in every breath you take and it's in caring for the kids and getting things ready for the next day, it's it's not work to you, it's worship to you. Lord, maybe it's a, a big ask, but I, I feel like you're saying to do this, I, I saw the Lord just wrapping up all the words tonight. Putting them in one big box with one big bow and handing them to you. And so, you can receive the specific word for you, but you can also glean from these other words, cause they, you can apply them all to your life. It's reaping the benefit of sowing, it's, here's the best way to describe it, is you're gonna, you're gonna walk in the prophet's reward this year. For every atmosphere you set, everything you brought to, to make our jobs easier. So, Lord, I release the gift of prophecy, words coming to pass. Lord, for gifts and surprises, Lord, I thank you for, for the miracles that are about to bound, the miracles of grace that are about to abound in everyday life. Or thanks for what you're doing in us and with us and for us this weekend. Or thanks for every worker, leader, those laying down their life in the house. And, Lord, I pray that tonight we'd all be refreshed by what you said and done. But more than anything, Lord, we'd say that, Lord, you're more than enough. Lord, thank you for the overflow of your heart. As we go out after encountering you tonight, Lord, whether we go home or to a hotel or to eat. Or when we walk in someplace, when people know that surely they've been with the Lord. But again, I release refreshing, Lord, I, I pray that every word I spoke tonight that was from you and you'd cause it to go into the ground deeply and bear much fruit. Or if I got in the way anywhere along the way tonight, Lord, you would just allow those things to just fall off. But, Lord, I thank you that you watch over your word day and night and you're careful to perform it. No word returns to you voided. Or thank you for this house, thank you for the privilege and the honor of getting to be a part of it. Or thanks for using this house to help make some of my own dreams come true. And the generosity I've received here, but also in the testimonies that I've heard out of this place over the last twenty-some years. I don't take it lightly and I, I honor you and I honor them for it. Lord, thanks for the answer to my prayers, Lord, when I said, "Lord, I don't need any more meetings, but I'll take as many friends as you give me." So, Lord, thanks for the gift of friendship and covenant with Pastor Steve and Trish, their family and this, this church family. Or thank you for the honor, the privilege of carrying your word tonight. And, uh, give us deep rest and sleep, in Jesus' name, amen.